It's seven o'clock, regular scheduled time for our city council meeting, and Mike, would you call the roll, please?
Call your wives.
Here.
Erickson. Holland.
Here.
Clarine Mines.
Here.
Holly Mines.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Powell.
Here.
Stute, representative of Ireland.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Item three is minutes, we have minutes for May 16 noon meeting and the May 16 regular meeting.
Move.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the minutes of May 16 noon meeting and May 16 regular meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Adoption of the agenda, John or Mike, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda as printed, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Visitors be heard. Addressing the council, persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium, please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. At this point, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda? Anybody? Anyone on the council have anything that they'd like to bring forth at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to public hearings. Item six A.
A special permit to exceed permissible sound levels for Vermillion Chamber of Commerce and Development Company for Thursdays on the Platts, Friday evening from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., owner about July 21, August 4, August 18, September 1, 2016, with rain dates of July 28, August 11, August 25, and September 8 of 2016, at Radigan Plots and a half block of Market Street, south of West Main Street.
The VCDC has made application for the special permit to exceed allowable sound levels by no more than 50 percent for the Thursdays on the Platts events that were on the date stated, they also included four rain dates this year scheduled in for alternates and due to bad weather. Also later on the agenda, we'll have the special daily malt beverage and wine license and the request to close the portion of Market Street from Main to a half a block west. The notice of hearing, the application, and their diagrams included in the packet, the city council will need to determine at the public hearing if this is a suitable location and appropriate facilities and if the applicant can demonstrate the public benefit for the event. City staff is not aware of any noise related problems with the events in previous years and would recommend issuance of the special permit unless information is presented at the public hearing to indicate there's a problem.
Thank you, Mike. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic at this time? Please.
Good evening, city council members and community, my name is Elijah Bondi, I'm with the Vermillion Chamber Development Company and currently I live at two East Main Street, apartment 209. I am representing the Vermillion Chamber Development Company on behalf of this event. I believe that this event is a wonderful downtown cultural city music event and I ask that you pass these forms so that we may continue to have this event.
Thank you, Elijah. Comments from anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, turn to the council.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the special permit to exceed possible permissible level sound levels, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six B, special daily malt beverage and wine license for Vermillion Chamber of Commerce and Development Company, owner about July 21, August 4, August 18, and September 1, with rain dates of July 28, August 11, August 25, and September 8, 2016, at Radigan Plots and a portion of Market Street abutting Radigan Plots. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this one?
I could just go ahead and quick just highlight, you know, the application came from the Vermillion Chamber and Development Company and as was stated, this is in conjunction with the Thursdays on the Platts events on the date stated, including the possible rain dates. The noise permit was just approved under the previous agenda item, notice of hearing and police chief's report are included in the packet which lists there's been no events with the previous year, the events held on a city street and city property, we have received certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured and also been provided with the release and indemnification, releasing the city from any liability for this event. The fee has been paid, administration recommends approval of the special license for the date stated with rain rates for the hours of 5:30 to 8:00.
Now, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? Again, if you want to.
If it's covered, I don't need to.
Okay. Turn it to the council for deliberation.
Move.
Motion to second to approve the special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC on the stated dates, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Elijah. Item seven A is chip seal project, Jose, please.
Thank you. Council tabled, this items are in the May 16 meeting, staff went back and negotiated with the low bidder at the time for a lower price, the bidder agreed to lower the main bid to $68,328.72 and the bid alternate to $10,890.36. In exchange for this, the city would be modifying the schedule to allow the contractor more time to complete the project, so essentially instead of requiring the contractor to be done by August, I think it was 13th, now they would be done August 27th. And then after August 16th, they would actually only be allowed to work on Saturdays, so I think they have two Saturdays after that date. The council budgeted $93,000 for chip sealing, this amount covers the purchase of the chips, the crack sealing, and the cost to hire a contractor to do the chip sealing itself. After the purchase of the chips and the crack sealing, staff estimates that $70,000 will be left over to hire a contractor. Staff will be asking that the budget be revised by $10,000 for all the roads to be chip sealed. Administration recommends awarding the project to top coat for the amount of $79,219.8. This amount covers the base bid on the bid alternate.
But it does not cover the chips themselves, is that...
No, yeah, we provide the chips and we do the crack sealing.
Public hearing, anyone here want to ask any questions? Jose? Turn it to the council.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the 2016 chip seal project, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Jose. Item eight A is street closure request, Market Street abutting Radigan Plaza Plots on July 21, August 4, August 18, September 1 of 2016 for Thursdays on the Platts, rain dates July 28, August 11, August 25, and September 8. And Derek, please.
Yeah, this year, just like previous years, Radigan Platts is going to have the Thursdays on the Platts, the area just south of Radigan Platts on the corner of West Main and Market Streets, sponsored by Thursdays on the Platts and the Chamber. The dates are July 21, August 4, August 18, and September 1, with rain dates of July 28, August 11, August 25, and September 8. The rain dates only host an event if an earlier date is canceled. Street closure request is the same as past years, Market Street from West Main to the east-west alley between West Main and Kidder Street from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. on each of the four utilized dates, as well as any of the previous mentioned rain dates if needed. Volunteers for Thursdays on the Platts committee will clean up the area after the events and administration recommends the council approve of the street closure request.
Thank you, Derek. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council?
Move. Second.
Motion to second to approve the street closure request, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight B is agreement to transfer service territory, and Shane, please.
Thank you. At the February 16 meeting, city council approved annexation of the airport into city limits. State law gives municipalities the right to provide utility services to annexed areas within a year of the annexation. At that same February meeting, city council approved notice of intent to purchase service territory, which was sent to Clay Union Electric on February 17, 2016. Since that February meeting, city staffs worked closely with Clay Union, staff to come up with an agreement to transfer territory, the service territory, including the purchase of electrical distribution properties and lost revenue payments. Transfer of service date has been set for June 30 of 2016, excuse me. Clay Union put together three options for purchasing their distribution properties, with the lowest amount coming in at $6,361.98, while the high amount was $10,898.23. The difference in the prices, the high price was them leaving their transformers and their meters, which the city cannot use, so they chose to remove those and keep them out of the price. In addition to the purchase of the electric service area, the city will also be responsible for paying annual lost revenue fees in the amount of 25 percent of all sales for a period of seven years for all existing properties. There will also be lost revenue fees for any new property that is served within the annexed property during an 11-year period. All of the lost revenue charges are based at the city's rate at the time of the transfer. Electric budget has funds to cover these expenses. Administration recommends the city approve the attached agreement to purchase distribution properties at a price of $6,361.98 and to make payments for lost revenue for a time of seven years at the appropriate rate.
Thanks a lot, Shane.
Thank you.
For the council packet, I don't think the agreement was included, but I think it's stated in what he just talked to us about. Yes?
Question, we have to, since an 11-year period, we have to pay if we, some of the buildings, something that is added into the...
Within the 11-year period, so let's...
What do we have to pay, is it the same 25 percent?
Yep, still the same 25 percent at the rate of the transfer date.
And it starts at seven years from the time they've reinstalls this stuff? The one I'm getting at, are we paying up to 17 years, are we going to be paying for...
No, we, at a maximum, for what's existing, we pay for seven years. Anything that's built within that 11-year window, we will pay the remaining of the 11-year window, not going over seven years.
And it's 25 percent?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Steve, please.
Do you have an estimate of what those costs will be over the seventh...
I do not.
Do we have any, do we estimate that at all for budgetary reasons?
John, do you or Mike want to respond to that?
No, I mean, it's, we use the, as Shane mentioned, we use 25 percent of what our rate is, but, and I've been part of the conversation, Shane or Chris, do you, did you share what the revenue has been or what the cost of...
We did not, no, we did not.
So...
But, so we're not thinking it's some huge amount, though?
Oh, no.
No.
Not that much property there.
Right.
Some hangers?
It's largely...
Just want to make this clear to the public.
Yes, it's, it's, maybe Chris Larson, the Clay Union Executive Director can explain, but there are a series of hangers, private and alone hangers and so forth, but I'll let Chris speak to that.
For those of you that, for those of you that don't know me yet, I am Chris Larson, I'm the new general manager at Clay Union Electric. I've met John and Mayor Powell and worked with these guys on coming up with that. I think I did a crude estimate in the very beginning and I want to say it was close to $1,700 a year. The 14, there's 14 services currently active out there that equate to about one average household for a year, I believe, so.
Thank you.
Is that the 25 percent then that we would...
We would be 25 percent of that.
Of that, okay. Now, are we everybody confused? Counsel?
Move. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the agreement to transfer service territory, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C fireworks to, for public display permit for July 4, 2016, for the VCDC, and Mike, please.
The Vermillion Chamber and Development Company is requesting the city council approval for their fireworks public display permit for July 4. The display is planned to begin at approximately 10:00 p.m., would be discharged from the field east of Polaris, west of Walmart, north of Borrower. Included in the packet is the application, the site plan, which has been approved by the fire chief. Administration would recommend the city council authorize the mayor to sign the fireworks public display permit for the VCDC July 4 event.
Anyone in the room want to speak to this item? Seeing none, turn to the council.
Second.
Motion to second, Mike note that there is a rain date for the 5th in case we have a problem with that.
Does this school have two different rest...
It shouldn't have by the time the July 4 rolls around. Yeah, fire chief will check on that, I'm sure. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item D, recycling resolution, John, please.
Thank you. For background, I know the council is more familiar with this, but I'm not sure for the public, the cities of Vermillion and Yankton, as well as the counties of Clay and Yankton, have what's called a joint powers agreement or joint powers organization. And that covers the Vermillion landfill and recycling center, as well as the transfer station that's located in Yankton. And basically, we have, while there's a checkbook, so to speak, on each side, there's a joint fund where dollars are transferred to run the overall operation as needed. Historically, we've had different recycling collections in Vermillion, we had, for, until 2009, we did not have a curbside recycling program and that began in 2009. Following council action and initial, and a referral, we started a curbside collection in September of 2009. Yankton has had it longer than that period of time, but they operate a different system. They don't provide the green and blue bins, each resident is responsible for providing their own containers from which recycling is collected. And so, we, another variable comes into play here is in Vermillion, as people know, we have a number of private haulers that collect garbage, whereas in Yankton, most residences are served by the city of Yankton, they do the garbage pickup. Yankton is looking at making some changes to their garbage collection system. As part of that, they are looking at going to a single stream recycling as well. So that impacts our joint powers operation in that currently, all the recycling material that's collected by the respective two cities or through the drop-off containers around our respective counties is processed and sold through joint powers. Most, but not all, the recycling material comes to the recycling center here in Vermillion. In some cases, cardboard and newspaper in particular are sold directly from the Yankton transfer station, they never actually make it to Vermillion, but the fund still receives the resources from that. One of the challenges that I guess we've discussed with the Yankton staff in that switching to curbside recycling in Yankton, what they're looking at is a single stream recycling system. With single stream recycling, they would be commingling all their recyclables into one pile, if you will. Right now, what we do is our recycling is sorted by plastics, aluminum, paper, cardboard, what have you, and then we sell that respective commodity in the marketplace. And then that money goes into the joint powers operation. It's anticipated that the co, the price for commingled recycling is down considerably and there may be no revenue that comes in when the recycling is collected in a commingled fashion like that and not sorted. And there is not enough volume in either Vermillion alone or Yankton alone, or there are two cities combined, that it's worth the equipment, the physical space, and the staffing that would take to sort the commingled recycling. So Yankton is looking at the option of collecting single stream recycling and then taking it to a single stream handler, which could be in Sioux Falls, could be in Omaha, could be in Norfolk, those are a couple that they have looked at, they have not made a decision at this point in time. And they've also not presented a plan, city staff from Vermillion, city staff from Yankton have met on a couple of occasions to discuss this as it's worked its way through the joint powers organization, but a formal plan has not yet been presented. And from the, I guess Vermillion's side of the operation, our concern has been how they choose to collect recycling in their community is certainly the purview of that community. But the concern that we've had from a joint powers operation is if the revenue goes away, then we'd like to see the expenses also reduced so that the net effect to joint powers is neutral, that the expenses and the revenue from going down correspondingly. And so the attached resolution before the city council, we hope, states what that intent is, that we recognize that Yankton may be wanting to try a single, excuse me, a single stream recycling process, and that is certainly within their rights to do, but that to the impact to the joint powers operation be neutral, that is, if revenues go down, then expenses also go down. So what the resolution does is just kind of offer to Yankton, as they consider this, what the wishes of the governing body of the Vermillion, city of Vermillion are. Be happy to answer questions, and Bob Iverson is here as well that he can speak to the recycling collection, certainly in Vermillion and to some degree what we know with respect to the Yankton operation.
John, do you know if our county commissioners have any input on this?
I think at this point, since the decision is largely being driven by the city of Yankton, the discussions, to my knowledge, have really only been between the respective cities. I can't speak to whether or not they've been in contact with Yankton County, but I don't believe there's been any contact with Clay County, with the exception of the Clay County representatives that are at the joint powers meetings.
Okay, thank you. This is an open meeting, anybody in the audience wish to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we'll turn to the council for deliberation. Howard?
Can Bob or John, can one of you give us an idea of how much difference in volume and income it will be if we lose Yankton not bringing their recyclables to us?
Right now, Yankton, we get around, for last year, 2015, we got around 550 ton from them. Vermillion, we process 660 ton by ourselves, so we would lose 550 ton of material. That would, around $64,000 is probably what we would lose, you know, from last year if they, if they went to a single stream. As far as expenses, you know, it's kind of hard to tell until we see a plan, but it's probably, you know, close to about even right now. I really can't tell you the expense part until we see a plan of theirs and what they do with the transfer station, but it's probably a pretty, pretty close of a wash.
Go ahead.
What, does any of the tipping fees go into covering the cost of the recycling center?
Right now, there's a $3 tipping fee that is paid to the recycling center and that's on the total amount of garbage taken in by both Yankton and Vermillion. So that's around, you know, $110,000.
So that would be mean, if Yankton were to drop, bringing recyclables over that, money would still come in to help us operate the landfill?
That's another thing that's in question, you know, what, what would Yankton want to do with their, that part of theirs? Right now, it's just a figure that was put in to help recycling, there was no set figure, it was just a taken out of the air figure that was used, because it all comes from the same pot.
But if they didn't have as much to bring over here, it certainly would reduce tipping income, wouldn't it?
No, that's not tipping.
The tipping fee would, the tipping fee could go down if they go to single stream because usually your first year of going to single stream, you have a pretty big increase, maybe a 15 to 22 percent increase over your recycling. And so that would be a lost revenue to the landfill of that 22 percent increase over what they recycle now. But otherwise, it evens out over the next few years. So there would be a loss of revenue to the landfill on single stream.
Didn't we study this a couple years ago and figure out that it was not profitable?
2012, I think we did a study and it was, it was decided that by both cities to kind of keep with what we're doing. The expense of going to a single stream for the cities to do it themselves was kind of expensive. Then we would have to buy some more trucks, equipment for the city and probably get almost into the business of hauling it, so it was decided then to keep with what we're doing.
Well, I think we should make sure that it's strongly recognized that we're just not for this, because I don't think that Vermillion wants to pay higher costs recycling and we are, and our community has always been very supportive of recycling, so we need to make sure that we can maintain a recycling center for our patrons.
And I think we have, our staff has said that to Yankton, that, you know, if there's going to be a, you know, a loss of revenue, that it's something that we'd have to look at and what we might have to do is change our way of accounting for the landfill.
If I may, Bob, if you want to put this up, I, excuse me, for interrupting there a second, I just, you have that one, Bob? I think, you know, we maybe not, may not do as good a job as a community of helping our residents understand that they are doing a great job of recycling and Bob will put up a chart here in a second that shows the Vermillion curbside program versus Yankton curbside program. And since, you know, Bob's got 2011 through 2015 on the screen there, and I think that speaks highly to, I think, what Mr. Wilson was just saying, the recycling culture that we have in this community. You can see with roughly about half the customers, how ours has continued to go up each year. And quite honestly, that's tougher and tougher to do as plastics get lighter, I mean, this is the pounds, so as the plastics are lighter, it's hard to keep growing that number, but to show an increase each year like that is great. I think that speaks to Bob and his staff and the efforts that we do to continue and to enhance recycling in our community. And I think, you know, it shows where Yankton has maybe not had that concerted effort in... perhaps not the same recycling culture that we have here in Vermillion, with their number being up and down, in quite frankly, their one year being just barely ahead of, you know, where we were at there. So kudos to Bob and his staff and the community for adopting this program and working with it. I think they've done a very nice job.
Thank you. Council?
I was just going to ask kind of two questions. So it seems like the reason that Yankton is pursuing this is the hope that they would increase the not, the amount of recycling, correct? That's sort of the hope for that? And you said that...
Yeah, their idea was that they would increase more volume. Right now, our recycling, the only thing we don't take is your three through seven plastics. And they're not worth anything, anyway. And so, what they're going to be doing is getting that three through seven and mixing it with their other materials. And I think they're also going to be taking glass with their curbside or their single stream. And that's going to be a problem for the processor, because of when you mix glass with anything else, it tends to break. And they're going to have some contamination, so...
You had said that generally, when people, when a community starts single stream, there's a jump right away, and then it maybe kind of levels off?
Yep.
So I guess my two questions are, number one, is your feeling that eventually, even if there was a bump, it might kind of, we don't necessarily have evidence that it would stay up there? And also, you know, because we do have, I think, a pretty good record in the amount that we are recycling, has Yankton tried any of the things that Vermillion has to increase recycling without having to go to the expense of single stream?
Not that I know of. I don't think they have. They use a one bin system right now, where you layer it into the bin, and then their curbside people come and sort it into a trailer, like, kind of like what we have.
So it's already in one bin?
Yeah.
Sort of a single stream-ish, anyway?
Yep.
Sorry. The mic went off.
If they do do single stream, and they have to take it somewhere else to get rid of it, if they have to pay for it, that would be all on the city of Yankton, correct?
That's our understanding, is that they have said that those costs to transport it to wherever that facility is at would be a Yankton cost. But I think, you know, as Bob has referenced, we haven't seen an actual plan that, if you will, puts that in writing, but that has been, is what they've expressed at meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, please.
So the resolution says that the council doesn't have an opinion about Yankton's possible decision to go into single streaming, but that we would sort of be opposed if it had any financial burden on Vermillion as a result, right?
That's correct.
Was there any discussion among city staff about simply having a resolution that opposed to single streaming, because we can't come up with any scenario in which it would be beneficial to us?
No, and that's, I guess, if you will, a little bit of the fine line that we walked in, that is it our position as Vermillion city staff to recommend, Vermillion city council will take a position opposing a process that's handled by the city of Yankton. So that's, I have to admit, I have to admit that as a staff who've talked about it, we struggle to see where it's going to work, but we didn't feel that's appropriate for us to tell them how to run their business. Or suggest you to tell them how to run their business.
Other comments or questions? It's a pleasure of the council. We have a motion, a second to approve the recycling resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 8E, set a special meeting date to canvass the June 7th, 2016 city election results. And Mike, please.
State law requires the canvas of the election results by the governing body within seven days of the election. As the next regular city council meeting is beyond that seven days, a special meeting will need to be set to canvass the June 7th city election results. The county commissioners will canvas the primary election results, which are combined, or which the city is combining with, on Thursday morning. I will be attending finance officer school in Spearfish from Wednesday through Friday. I would request or suggest a special meeting sometime on Monday, June 13th. One item on the agenda would be the canvas of the election results, so it should not be for a long meeting. Ask the council members to see if there's a time on the 13th, and we can get a quorum of members there to canvas the election results.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, do you want to start with the first option, about noon, on the 13th? Noon, can we get, can we get five?
Yep.
How many did we have here? How many can? Two, three, four, five. We'll have five. Let's do it at noon. And it takes 10 minutes? Okay. Yeah, send us an email, since it's not a... Is that okay with everybody? If we just do it at noon and get it over with?
Okay.
Okay. Whether, yeah, whether we have it in the evening, or whatever, I know your situation. But, okay, so if the city would send us a memo to remind us, I appreciate that.
You need to make a motion?
Yes.
So move...
A motion, a second to meet at noon on June 13th, to canvass the June 7th, the city election results. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item F is a resolution, amending resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro turf sprayer. And, oh, you did come back, Jose.
Thanks. The city council approved the purchase of the 2016 sprayer at the March 7th meeting. The cost for the 2016 sprayer is $31,334. The existing 2005 sprayer was planned on being sold by Seal Bits for $4,000. The dealer selling the city, the 2016 sprayer, is interested in taking the 2005 sprayer, the old sprayer, as a trade in. The dealer would be deducting $4,000 from the cost of the 2016 sprayer. The proposed resolution would be amending the resolution approved in March 7th, and allow for the trade in of the 2005 sprayer. Administration recommends approving the resolution, amending the resolution, to purchase a 2016 Toro Multi Pro 1750 turf sprayer from the Toro Companies participating distributor Midwest Turf and Irrigation, for the NJPA and city of Tucson contract price of $31,334, less the $4,000 trade in for the 2005 Toro Multi Pro 1200 turf sprayer.
Any comments or questions for Jose?
Move approval.
Motion, a second to approve the resolution, amending the resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro turf sprayer. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Jose. Item 9A is Bliss Point Park playground equipment. And again, Jose, please.
Thank you. In December 2015, the city received a donation from the Blanche Primary Estate. This estate request, the state requested that the donation be used for the purchase and construction of playground equipment at a city park. The new park to be developed in Bliss Point was identified as the best location to utilize the funding. The city opened bids on May 24th for the playground equipment. The bids were sent, or sorry, the bids for the playground equipment, bike rack, bench, and trash can. These, the specifications on the plans were actually sent to three prospective bidders. In the area, the city received two bids. The low bid was from Krauts Recreation for $58,471.24. The high bid was for $71,474. The park's capital fund budget will have to be revised to include the money necessary to complete this project. The city has received $71,674 from the Blanche Primary Estate. This money will be used to cover the cost of the playground equipment, and a portion of the surfacing material, the edging for the playground area, and lighting. This cost, the cost to complete all of these items will be $75,000. Additional funding from the state is anticipated to be provided before the end of the year to make the difference. Administration recommends awarding the bid to Krauts Recreation of Omaha, Nebraska, for $58,471.24 for the purchase and installation of the Bliss Point playground equipment.
Thank you, Jose. Counsel? Steve, please.
We had looked at several options. Parks and Rec showed us, is this the, I think this is the one that we had...
This is a preferred option.
Our preferred, right?
Yeah.
All right, move approval then.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the Bliss Point Park playground equipment purchase and installation. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Jose.
Thanks.
Item 9B is fuel quotes. And Mike, please.
Should have had setting in front of you, and it's on your monitors, the fuel quotes. The first being unleaded gasoline, 10% ethanol. First quote's from Stern Oil, $1.99.08. Item two, unleaded gasoline regular, $2.32.23. Number two diesel fuel dyed, $1.70.91. Number two diesel fuel clear, $2.00.56. Second bid was from Brunick Service on one, $2.01. Item two, $2.37. Item three, $1.70. Item four, $2.03. Stern's low on one, two, and four, and Brunick Services low on three.
Counsel?
Move approval of the low bid.
Motion, a second to approve the low bids on the fuel. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 10 is city manager's report. John, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Just a reminder to the community, the Prentice Park pool is open as weather permits, and it'll be open until, or through July 31st. As has been mentioned a couple of meetings, Bob has the free tire disposal for Vermillion and Clay County residents. That's currently available at the landfill. It's part of a grant from the state to help control mosquito population. And we estimate that we maybe have about two more weeks roughly left on that grant. So if you have tires to dispose of, you can still take those to the landfill for the next couple of weeks. We do have a term expiring of the Vermillion housing authority. The terms of office on this board are for five years. We do have expression of interest forums. They are due by Friday, June 17th at noon. And it's anticipated that the city council would make an appointment at your next meeting on June 20th. Mosquito fogging, or spraying, whichever you'd like to call it, that'll begin starting next Monday, June 13th, and then end on Friday, the 17th of June. Typically, the spraying takes place about 9:00 PM to roughly 1:00 AM, as the weather permits. As in past years, if a property owner would like the spraying not to take place as the equipment passes their property, contact us here at city hall, and we'll be happy to place that address on the list, so that the spraying equipment is not turned on as it passes your particular property. They will be spraying the internal areas of Prentice and Lyons Park on Wednesday, June 9th, after 9:00 PM, again, if the weather permits. And then just a reminder, has been kind of referenced with a few agenda items this evening. East Main Street will be closed between Plum and Sycamore on Thursday, June 9th, Friday, June 10th, and Sunday, excuse me, Saturday, June 11th. And that closing will be from 7:00 PM to approximately 9:30 PM. And then also on Sunday, June 12th, from 4:00 PM to approximately 6:30 PM. And these closings are related to the Shakespeare Festival. They, we stop the traffic going through there during the actual production time. The barricades will be manned, so if there is emergency vehicles that need to reach the hospital at that point in time, they can move the barricades out of the way.
Comments or questions for our city manager, anyone?
John, did you, the Prentice Park, you said they were spraying that June 9th?
Yes, June, Wednesday, June 9th, after 9:00 PM. Just the internal areas.
June 9th, I have it as a Thursday.
You're right. So it would be June 8th. Sorry, it is before the productions again. Yep, that's June 8th.
So it's before the play?
Yes, it is, that's, that's why we're doing it, so...
Bring you on a mask.
Not during. That'd make it a little awkward. And then also, I should remind the public, has been alluded to a little bit ago with another agenda item, there is a election tomorrow. All four wards, although there's only three with a race, but municipal voting in Vermillion takes place at the Armory over in Princeton Street from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions for John? Seeing none, we'll turn to invoices payable. Stump, Mike, anybody have any item? Number one, we'll do separate. Any other items on there that you'd like to ask about?
Item 179, it's Resco, $60,000 for something.
This is stuff in the electric department that consists of transformer wire, connection, connecting equipment, whoops. I'm sorry, 179 Resco. It's a combination. It's wire, it's transformers, it's some of them tubs they set transformers on for the electric department. It's kind of going into the season, purchasing stuff to go into inventory that would be needed during this construction season.
Normal budget?
Yes. Just the electric department, their normal supplies end up being five-digit numbers.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mike? Well, let's take item one first, okay? Motion, a second to approve item one. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Rest of the items?
Move the rest of the items.
Second.
Motion, a second to pay the rest of our bills. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have one item on the consensus agenda. Set a public hearing date of June 20th, 2016, for a special permit to exceed permissible sound levels by no more than 50% for the Vermillion Fire and EMS Department at Barstow Park on July 4th, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Move approval of the consensus agenda.
Motion, a second to approve the consensus agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Steve?
Move adjourn.
Motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. We're adjourned. Thank you all. Make sure...